Gracious God, we thank you for this first Monday in December. We thank you for all the work that has been accomplished in this past year and all that lies ahead of us. We lift up tonight the concerns and opportunities of this city, its citizens, and all those who pass through. We pray you guide us in this meeting that we might carefully consider the matters that come before this council. And Lord, we give you thanks for those who are our first responders and who are ready at a moment's notice to care for those in need. We pray to bless our city staff as they work through this holiday season. Keep them warm and safe, Lord. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There is a presentation listed on your agenda tonight, but that will actually be our second meeting in December on the sixteenth, so we really have no presentations this evening. We'll go right into communications. Anybody? Anything?
Mayor, I'm sure you're going to talk about it, but I had the opportunity to go to Mark Bliss's retirement ceremony. It was a fine event and it was great to see a lot of old faces and new faces and hear a lot of good old stories. It was fun. It was good to say goodbye again.
It was good looking, some of the old pictures.
Yeah, and hearing some of the stories about his columns. I forgot about his Mark My Words and the stories that he did about his daughters up until about junior high. They didn't want any part in that. So anyway, it was really good and we're going, well, I know we'll all, I know we'll all do it.
I just wanted to say thanks to the city staff and everybody for whoever has been involved in all of these different holiday events that have been going on, the Christmas tree lighting, the parade of the lights last night. I know a Sunday evening event like that sometimes isn't always everybody's first choice, but man, to see those kids having fun and see parents and families out there, it's just as good as you can ask for in a community. See really a lot of people coming out for those specialty events, so if it's police and fire and public works and everybody that's involved, just thank you guys because, man, you see the smile on people's faces and it's really worthwhile.
It is. The holiday season is upon us. Anybody else down here? It's quite tonight. The Cape Community Area Foundation had a ribbon cutting ceremony last Tuesday and they represent Cape, Jackson, Scott City, and really kind of a, they support several local charities and local nonprofits. And they were doing that for two reasons. One, for the ribbon cutting. And second, because tomorrow, December 3rd, the first Tuesday after Thanksgiving, is National Giving Day. And they just wanted to reiterate that, and I would like also, so think about tomorrow. And in the spirit of the holidays, give something to your local charity or local nonprofit that you're interested in and, because it comes from your heart. So remember, Giving Tuesday was just tomorrow. He already mentioned the tree lighting and whatnot, First Friday Coffee's next, this next Friday. And again, I think representatives from some nonprofits are going to be there and have a program. I also think that the new owners of the Century Casino will be there that day. That vote is Wednesday and goes into effect Friday morning, so the ownership will change as of Friday morning. In fact, those is planned. Congratulations to CMO for another good football season. They hosted a playoff game, which was good for the community. And being from Cape, having kids that have gone to Cape Central, I still have a lot of friends and whatnot that are in Jackson. And kudos to them for paying for the state championship this next weekend. That's a big deal for them. I even heard that they rescheduled their Christmas parade, which is going to be Saturday at five to Sunday. Because part of the town will be at the state championship game in Columbia and they will honor the football team, win or lose, on Sunday at that parade. So it's a big thing for that community and kudos to them. I want to reiterate again, we've talked about, Scott and I have talked about, and some of you've talked about having some sort of a Cape Legislative Day in January or early February, where we from Cape will go to Jeff City and lobby on behalf of our city. And I want you to just kind of think about that and maybe Scott and staff can get some possible dates and we can look and see who can go up and come back that day. So just kind of keep that on your minds. And I already don't have anything else, Scott?
Just mentioned the CMO girls volleyball that they play in Kentucky.
That's right.
And the NCAA tournament as well, so things are going well. Exciting to watch the success of them and I assume it's on ESPN something.
The Ocho.
The Ocho.
ESPN Plus, probably.
Yeah.
That's all I have. That's all you have? All right. Anybody here this evening to speak about something that's not on the agenda this evening?
My name is Ethan Prossel. I'm a resident of Cape Shore Island North Board. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. During the council meeting on November 18th, Bill Number 19-185 was introduced, which would ban parking on Normal Avenue from Henderson to Pacific. During that same meeting, some of my fellow students appeared in support of this bill, citing observations they made over a one-hour duration. Additional discussions have included ticketing procedures, safety concerns for individuals with visual impairments, and alternative solutions to an outright ban of parking. In order to learn more about this issue and hear additional opinions, this item was tabled. And so in that spirit, I'd like to demonstrate my opposition to this item. Parking on campus is already an issue that most are familiar with. While this parking ban may provide a solution to other problems, it would only further the issue of inadequate campus parking. To my knowledge, no proposal has been made that addressed where cars that currently park on Normal would move to. The issue of cars being parked illegally, as we discussed, as creating a safety hazard not just for students with disabilities, but also students who may be crossing the road while looking at their cellphone. Regarding the problem of students looking at their cellphone while crossing the street, although this may be a hazard for the pedestrian, it's one that I'm much less sympathetic towards. If a college student has not yet learned to look before crossing the street, then that is an issue of an individual with no regard for their surroundings, and someone should probably take some individual responsibility there. Vehicles that are parked illegally, thus making it difficult to see before crossing the road, are not the result of rebellion students with no respect for the law, but rather a symptom of the larger issue that is inadequate parking for students, faculty, and staff of CMO. To my knowledge, both KPD and DPS both have the authority to write tickets for cars that are illegally parked. I believe this is a matter of enforcement of the law. A law is only as effective as it is, as its enforcement. Limiting the opportunity to violate the law by enacting a ban only causes an inconvenience to those who follow the law. I believe alternative solutions can fix this issue. First and foremost, adequate parking needs to be provided to students, particularly those who spend hundreds of dollars for permits. Additionally, legal and illegal parking spots can be more clearly marked. Speed bumps and stop signs can be placed to slow fast-moving vehicles. Finally, electronic crossing devices can be installed to assist pedestrians. Again, though, this will require adequate enforcement to be effective. A parking ban will only relocate this issue, not cure it. And one final thing is I saw today a quote from MLK, I think it was providentially, it said, "Justice anywhere threatens justice everywhere." And I thought to myself before I came here, is this really something that I want to complain about? Because it seems so small, but in the end, it really is systemic of a bigger issue. So thank you for your time.
I will say this item was tabled by the council for a number of reasons. One, because there were a lot of residents that live in that area that North contacted about this before. And I think that's going to occur. Originally, the idea was to maybe do this and get it done before the holidays, so any change could be made before the next semester, but that's not going to happen and the university knows that. They are also doing their own studies about all sorts of other things that would happen if it were closed, for some reason, like emergency vehicle deliveries and just no access to anywhere up in there without that. So there's a lot of things happening behind the scenes to address that and look at the options, so it's still being studied.
Yeah, my name is Kayla Potek and I'm in support of the parking ban. And I have a lot of remarks that, my opponent had a lot of really good points, but I can make counter argumentative points against what he had to say. That it is really good that people with disabilities and others, like parking needs to be remedied on Normal Avenue because right now it is problematic with cars parking illegally. And what he said, like placing barriers by the crosswalks or having DPS patrol or KPD, like that's a lot of really good positive points to, like instead of having the ban, have those resources available. And it would be really good if CMO Department of Public Safety was allowed to patrol and ticket on Normal Avenue, which I know, I think they're working on that, which hopefully that can happen sooner instead of something else that would take more time to put in place, like installing barriers or audible pedestrian signals for students like me with a disability that rely on auditory cues for safety. That would be beneficial instead of illegally parked cars that block the crosswalk. So I'm really hoping that the ban does go through and it gets passed, because that would be beneficial to pedestrians and students with disabilities. And Normal Avenue is a really heavy street that is frequent foot traffic and cars and it's a really busy street. From North Anderson to Pacific is the area that is mostly used by CMO students and traffic. And it's a really busy area that cars don't need to be illegally parked. They need to find another area. And a student had talked about turning the parking lot across from Vanderbilt Hall and the University Center. He had talked about making that into a multi-level parking garage, which would be a good solution for, instead of the parking ban, they could have a parking garage in that area and that would be a good compromise for students like him that don't want the ban on parking. They could have a different area on campus to park instead of having Normal Avenue be a no parking area. That would be a good alternative, having that multi-level parking garage built, even though there is the issue of finances. That's a good alternative for students that are against the ban.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Eric Zone. I was here last evening talking about the parking. So our group met and we came up with some solutions that could go into effect for the street. We're neutral on the fact of just banning the street, but one of the solutions we came up with would be to add painted parking lines to the side of Normal. That way, you know, both people are trying to park there and we'll be able to know where they can park, where they can't park. That way it'll be clearly marked. And then off of that, you could add parking meters, or I know those are kind of getting outdated, maybe like the electronic ones that they have. I know they're having down in Florida everywhere. That could create a little bit of additional revenue for the city. And then our final suggestion was for DPS and the city of Cape Drive to work out an agreement, like an official agreement between the two of them, if you're going to police the street. I did hear some things today about them working together, which is a good thing to hear. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you.
Get serious, you're taking off.
Good evening. My name is Stafford Moore Jr., outstanding in representation as a voice for many concerned citizens of our community. Our aim is to address a few issues concerning the indoor aquatic center and the new plan that was presented in the Southeast Missouri on October the 2nd, 2019. Our goal here this evening is to stress the importance of prioritizing the indoor aquatic center at the Jefferson School location. Focusing the full 10 million or as much as possible to that building or that facility. On January the 8th, 2019, you guys, the city council unanimously voted to support the school district never wavering plan to prioritize building an indoor aquatic center at Jefferson Elementary. And because of that vote, it is of our belief that the city, in collaboration with the school district, should build the best indoor aquatic center possible at the Jefferson location, utilizing again the full 10 million at this location, even if that means building a pool smaller than 50 meters. After the prop passed on April the 3rd, 2019, the city council and school board empowered an ad hoc committee to iron out details for a new aquatic center. But as stated by the former mayor, Jay Newsom, if I'm saying that right, in a article in the Missouri, and I quote, "Location will not be an issue. The decision has already been made. The Cape Toronto City Council and the school board have agreed. The aquatic center will be built adjacent to Jefferson Elementary School," end quote. In view of this, we again feel it is important to stress the priority should be to build the best possible aquatic center at the Jefferson School location. This means we should not build a smaller facility to accommodate other interests. We reject the proposal for a smaller pool without adequate multipurpose rooms for rental use and programmable space for water aerobics. The city council residence feels misled because we were told we had to replace the municipal pool, but now it is being said that replace somehow means it can be fixed. Although we respect the finding of the ad hoc committee and recognize the validity of issues they raised, the fact is, it is still unknown if we can rebuild a municipal pool for $6 million. It's also physically or financially irresponsible to start a job you do not have enough money or any proof that you could finish. It also seems to be a bad business decision to build what the consultant said was the more cost-effective pool, smaller, which also strengthens the need to prioritize the Jefferson location, while building smaller aquatic center when the location, infrastructure, and other amenities are already available at Jefferson School or are in development. We also want to bring attention to the fact and hope that you recognize that the ad hoc committee was never organized to discuss location, but rather was charged with identifying findings about cost estimates and design details. As such, a suggestion that the money be used on two pools is just that, a suggestion. You are the deciding making, decision-making body and are free to reject their finding. But even if you build two pools with 10 million, you should put the financial emphasis, 6 million minimum, on the Jefferson Elementary Aquatic Center in order to keep your promise to the community to honor the preference you made to the school district and the citizens of Cape Toronto who voted with their, who threw their vote overwhelmingly approved it. With the unanimous vote from you guys, the city council, overwhelming support of the citizens of Cape Toronto, we believe the course of action surrounding the indoor aquatic center should be to prioritize, prioritize the Jefferson location, making it the best it could possibly be, possibly be with the full 10 million, the 6 million pledged from the city and the 4 million from the school district. This is what the citizens of Cape Toronto voted for. Thank you.
You, you don't know at all?
I second that.
Yeah, I mean, and some of the local pastors, we agree to the statements that were just read, and we ask that you'd only consider the arguments that we've made and consider to you this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Mike speaking, you guys, it's not on the agenda. I like that sweater.
I do too.
Mr. Mayor, let's just make a comment back on the, on the parking, CMO parking. Indeed, the CMO DPS does have the authority to write tickets on city streets. It's not been there probably in the past, but after the meeting that we had, they did come to the police department and have gotten our devices so that they can patrol that section of Normal and do some, somebody mentioned the need for additional enforcement, and they'll be doing that then in the upcoming weeks and months. So just wanted to make that clear. There was cooperation and now it gets altered.
That in itself should stop a lot of illegal parking. I mean, just, so instead of having, how many parking places are on Normal? Forty-something? Forty-eight? Something like that. Usually there's 60 or 70 cars parked there, so that's going to, I believe, will leave a lot of issues you have with crosswalks. So anyway, we'll see. Their study is, we'll go to that. Nothing else? We will go into the agenda review.
First, we have two public meetings tonight. First public meeting will consider a request for a special use permit for purpose of constructing an electrical power distribution substation, a typical substation, 1400 West Cape Rock Drive. I see there's some folks here to discuss that tonight, if we'll be hearing from that. It's going to be planning zoning, planning zoning recommended approval, and so that will be considered in the first public hearing. Second public hearing is to rezone property at 1205 South Malabar Road. Intersection of Malabar and Cape Highway, I don't know about the radio station anyway. This is a rezoning from A1 to R4. I believe what's being contemplated there is a long-term care facility, but of course, that's not really what's being considered in the rezoning, so that would be our second public hearing tonight. Both of those, first reading of both of those items are on the agenda, items 15 and 16. Our consent agenda tonight is the second third reading of the agreement to have the county collect taxes as they have in the past. Five, six, seven, and eight are record plats. Second third reading of those from last time. And then number nine is a proposal from the region's capital advantage for special obligation bonds. We've discussed this a few times in the latest offer sheet is at your places and will be posted on the website, the final term sheet in front of you. If you have any questions, I know Victor is here to answer those.
No? No questions. I will say that I think it is really advantageous that the money is there and we can borrow this as we need it and don't have to borrow the whole thing upfront, pay interest on it, so we can kind of pay as we go and go pay less interest.
Absolutely. We're good about, and our financial advisor, Piper Jaffrey, very good about the rate and terms, and so none of the questions. Item number 10 is the final payment for the Hopper Road Box 4 project. Number 11 is the final payment for the 2018 sidewalk cap program. The new ordinance, are there any consent and deny that you'd like to have removed or sort of present? Our new ordinances, number 12 is for calling of the election for the TTF 6. This will be a five-year extension as we discussed last time. Last time we kind of talked, most of the projects are the ones that were recommended by the, the council, but we're not finalizing that project list until we have a little more information regarding the grant program to decide between the TTF project and, excuse me, the VMD project and the spray project. So that will be a decision that will be after we get the answer from that grant application. This is the first reading of calling that election, the five-year extension. Number 13 is a record plat Summers Castle Rock subdivision. This takes three lots in turn of number one. Number 14 is the Sleepy Hollow subdivision. This takes one lot and puts them in two. Number 15 is from the public hearing for the substation. Sixteen is a public hearing from the rezoning. And number 17 is the repeals ordinance, number 4972. And, and this is from our downtown TIFF district. The RPA 2 is a section of that that was activated by that ordinance. This dissolves that and thus restores 23-year benefit timeframe for that RPA 2. That's a project that just got a agreement with them, had certain amount of time to deliver that agreement. They had some things happen out of control and we're going to do it, so this puts us back to square one. Further questions on new ordinances? We've got the appointment of the River Campus Board of Managers and appointment of the Show Me Center Board of Managers. That's, Show Me Center Board of Managers is the city manager's slot that's reserved for city manager. And the River Campus, I think I've got almost everybody's conference or lower gallows for, for later consideration. Mayor, that's all. We're good.
That's the case. I will call this meeting the regular meeting of the council to order. And roll call.
Here. Rob Rock, here. Robert George, here. Stacy Kinder, here. Shelley Moore, here. Ann Bressler, here. Nathan, here.
Looks like everybody's here. I'll maintain motion to adopt the agenda.
Someone, second.
Motion on Ryan, second by Dan. Any discussion? Not all of us in favor, sitting by by sending aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two public hearings this evening. A public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating an electrical power distribution substation at 1400 West Cape Rock Drive. Anybody here this evening to speak on behalf of a public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Russell Berger with AMR Missouri, and I want to thank you Mayor Fox and City Manager Scott Meyer and the rest of the council for giving the opportunity to speak on behalf of AMR Missouri this evening. And you said it a while ago, that holidays are upon us. That's why I take the opportunity to wish everybody in this room happy upcoming holiday season. Cape Rock, we request your approval to construct a substation there at that location. It's needed. Adding the smart grid technology to the substation will improve reliability for the area and will allow us to serve any future development in that area. And also, future capacity, will allow us to increase our capacity by adding a new substation. That's all I have.
Any question?
Just out of curiosity, what's a foot print of that substation?
Seventy-six by eighty.
Sorry?
It's roughly eighty by ninety. Eighty by ninety?
I have a question. How long has AMR known that council?
This is July 2008. Two thousand and eight.
And you just feel like, at this point, you want to be ready for more infrastructure?
Yeah, the load's going out in that area and for us to serve that area well, we just need future more capacity to do so.
And I want to thank you Mayor Fox and City Manager Scott Martin, the rest of the council. Give me that can be speak on behalf of Amheron, Missouri this evening. And you said it a while ago, that holidays are upon us. That's what they got to, to wish everybody in this room a happy upcoming holiday season. Uh, Cape Rock, uh, will you, uh, request your approval to construct a substation there? At that location, it's needed. The, adding the smart grid technology to the substation will improve reliability for the area and will allow us to serve any future development in that area. And also, uh, future capacity will allow us to increase our capacity for buying a new substation. That's all I have.
Any question?
Uh, just out of curiosity, what's the footprint of that substation?
Seventy-six by eighty-eight?
Sorry?
It's roughly eighty by ninety. Eighty by ninety?
Sure.
I have a question. How long has Amheron owned that tunnel?
This is July of two thousand and eight.
And you just feel like, at this point, you want to be ready for more infrastructure?
Yeah, the, the load's going out in that area and for us to, to serve that area well, we just need future, uh, work capacity to do so.
As part of projects like this, do you usually, uh, do any sort of landscaping or anything to just kind of dress it up a little bit for maybe the surrounding homeowners and property owners?
We do. And I think, uh, Tony, do you have, uh, a rendering?
I do. I have, came to stop to someone's. Uh, everyone wants to see one?
So it's pretty low profile. I think that's an existing thing along.
Looks better than a lot of friendly development.
Yeah, so it's a pretty low-profile, uh, structure.
Yes, yes. And, uh, we've built several around the area and they're escaped well and well-maintained and taken care of.
Okay, any other question?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tony Bonsonori and I'm also a chairman. Thank you to, to the council and the mayor. Um, I just wanted to hit a couple items and Mr. Berger stole a little my thunder, but, um, so the main need for the substation is that over the past five to ten years, there's been, uh, development, new neighborhoods, apartment buildings, uh, new university housing and some businesses. And as Mr. Berger said, uh, we're, um, planning for future development. The other thing that we did was we held a public, uh, community meeting to take some of the, uh, feedback from the community and we made a couple of changes to our design for that. And then the last thing I want to say is that, uh, this new substation will be taking customer load from two other existing substations and it'll, it'll improve the reliability of the, of the local station. But it'll also, by reducing the load of the other two, it'll improve the reliability of those as well. That's all I have.
You previously mentioned this as, uh, upgrading the smart grid or whatever. Is that some, is that something you anticipate doing, uh, at all of your substations here? Uh, and is there a plan for how long that?
There, there, there is a plan for that. Uh, one of the other two substations, we're, we're planning to modernize that one as well. Um, that's, uh, in the five-year plan. We have a schedule on that one.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Tom.
All right.
Appreciate it. Anybody else this evening appear for the council about this public hearing?
Mayor, I want to know, add is that after talking with Amheron, obviously this is in my ward, uh, this is part of my neighborhood. Um, I understand that this isn't ideal for, for the neighborhood. Um, but it's something that from an infrastructure standpoint is, is very important to do. Um, I do think with, with talking with, um, with Amheron, I do think some of the drainage issues that they've had coming off the back of this property, going to the Heritage Park condominiums, I do think some of that will be alleviated. Um, and I do think with the, the proposal they've got, um, is, is it, is the best, uh, the best of the situation. So, I support the project.
Good. Any other? If not, I will close this public hearing. We also have a public hearing to consider a request for rezone property at twelve oh five South Malalver Road from M one Light Manufacturing Industrial to R four Medium Dynasty Multifamily Residential District. Anybody here this evening to speak on behalf of this public hearing?
Hello. My name is Chanel Armor. I am owner of the development. And this development is for, um, assisted living and memory care community. It will be a resort-style retirement senior living community with services for assisted living and people diagnosed with memory care dementia and Alzheimer's disease. And the building will be approximately seventy-five thousand square feet, three-story. Um, we do have, um, a lot of state-of-the-art programs in line, um, help with specialists on dementia care involved in setting up and developing the programs as well. So, um, I've also had with me tonight Nick Walker from Impact if you have specific questions regarding the construction. But, um, I appreciate your support and how you approve on the rezoning of this property.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we had, one of the people was concerned at the, at the zoning and called was about, uh, um, concerned with radioization about the microwave connections. I don't know if we've got a chance to talk with them about, uh, maintaining that connection or not.
Sure, yes. Um, and just, uh, recently I talked again to Dr. Lambert, he had concerns with us. And, um, Nick as well talked to an architect that we're going to be working with. And there are three, um, as I understand, receivers and two of them are at a much higher elevation and we don't see a problem with that. One is at a much lower elevation and so I called Mr. Lambert and told him, um, that that one might become a problem. And I asked him if he could look into the cost of raising it and, um, he just has not been able to get back with me on that yet. But we're hoping to work together on that issue.
Thank you, thank you. So let me ask you this question. The height of the, uh, lower receiver that he has, would it still be affected if zoning did not change?
Uh, it would be, it would not be affect, I mean, it wouldn't make a difference because the elevation at least in fifteen, fifteen.
Sorry. Yeah.
Nick Walker with the tax strategies, four oh one South Bay Kids Streets, they also deserve. Um, so current zoning as it is in the light industrial, you could build up to forty feet.
Right.
Which could affect that lower.
So I'd just say the same, it still might affect its property.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else on this public hearing about rezoning? If not, I will close this public hearing. Are there anybody, uh, any other appearances this evening for any items on the agenda? Or any other items on the agenda this evening? If not, we will move to consensus agenda, Barry?
Bill number nineteen dash one eighty, ordinance authorizing city manager, ex-people Greenwood County, Cape Girardeau, clerk of the county commission and county collector for tax collection services in the city of Cape Girardeau. An ordinance authorizing city manager, ex-people Greenwood County, Cape Girardeau, clerk of the county commission and county collector for tax collection services in the city of Cape Girardeau. Nineteen dash one eighty-one, an ordinance approving the Reciprocal Linnwood subdivision or Reciprocal Linnwood subdivision. On nineteen dash one eighty-two, an ordinance approving the Reciprocal West Broadway property subdivision. An ordinance approving the Reciprocal West Broadway property subdivision. On nineteen dash one eighty-three, an ordinance approving the Reciprocal Block and Fifth subdivision. An ordinance approving the Reciprocal Block and Fifth subdivision. On nineteen dash one eighty-four, an ordinance approving the Reciprocal Kings Highway subdivision. An ordinance approving the Reciprocal Kings Highway subdivision. On the nineteen dash one eighty-six, resolution approving a proposal from Regent's Capital Advantage to purchase special obligation bonds series twenty twenty of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and authorizing certain matters for raising their ticket.
Do you have before you the consensus agenda? Sir, motion.
Sub moved.
Action number, Mr. Berger, seconded by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number nineteen dash one eighty-seven, an ordinance permitting chapter fifteen of the city code extending the one-half to one cent, one percent transportation sales tax and re-establishment of the city transportation trust fund. In calling an election, the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, in question of the approval of the sales tax extension, designated the time of holding the election, authorize and direct the city court to give notice of the election. Summon. Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Nate. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, just, out of curiosity, do we have any update on, just thinking forward to when we might be discussing where we're at on projects? Um, do we have any indication where the governor's office is at on, uh, grant funding requests?
Uh, we've received some inquiries about more details of, of the projects, but I have not received anything different than we've received before, that they've anticipated, uh, approval in late December, early January. Any staff has received anything different?
Anticipating, making decisions, not.
Right.
Not. Not approval of ours necessarily, but.
No, no, just on the grant.
Our main concern was to get this passed so we know that it's going to be on the ballot in April. Uh, we can, we've got plenty of time between even handwork, everybody talking about projects before the April election and so.
And those will be specific?
Yes.
To the, to the, yeah.
And they have it in the past and I think that's where we need to keep that up, so.
Yes.
Uh, we've been pretty diligent about doing what we say we're going to do and it just so happens a lot of them take it all along because we have to collect the money before we actually do it, so. Uh, to me, that's just very efficient way to do it and I crack away through the tax paper.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Bill number nineteen dash one eighty-eight, an ordinance approving the Reciprocal Summers and Castle Rock subdivision.
Sub moved.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Bill number nineteen dash one eighty-nine, an ordinance approving the Reciprocal Sleepy Hall subdivision.
Sub moved.
Second by Dan, second by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Bill number nineteen dash one ninety, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Union Electric Company, DVA, Amheron, Missouri, for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a electrical power distribution substation at fourteen hundred West Cape Rock Drive in the city and county of Cape Girardeau. Summon. Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Bill number nineteen dash one ninety-one, an ordinance permitting chapter thirty of the code of ordinances in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at twelve oh five South Malalver in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, in M one to R four.
So the.
Second. Motion by Dan, second by Ryan.
Before we, we, I just want to say something. Uh, Cape Girardeau was a fantastic, sorry. Cape Girardeau is a fantastic community for people to travel to for healthcare, to look at, for, uh, elder care, for memory care, all this stuff. And so having an additional facility in the city of Cape Girardeau is fantastic for, uh, incredible jobs, great, uh, bringing in population and adding great services to our existing services. So, uh, I just think this is a cool project.
Anybody else? If not, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number nineteen dash one ninety-two, an ordinance repealing, ordinance number forty-nine seventy-two, and dissolving the downtown Cape Girardeau RPA two special allocation fund.
Sub moved.
Motion by Dan.
Sir.
Second by Nate.
So this is what I want to add, ask a question about. So by repealing this, this does, in the future, we can go back and, and grant a TIFF, TIFF for the same structure.
We can reactivate this area.
Okay.
Now we just start to block over again?
Start back to the twenty-three years. Yep, okay. You know, whenever you approach downtown Cape Girardeau from the south, you're driving up, you go past, you know, RP and Furniture and you look and you see, you see one main, you know? And, and whenever I saw this was coming up, it just kind of, my heart sunk because I thought, man, this is a sentinel project for the city of Cape Girardeau. This is that really fantastic option we've got for, uh, for welcoming community, citizens into the community, bringing them into our downtown and to see that this TIFF funding was being removed, uh, just made my heart sick. You know, I, I think that we all would like to see it thriving downtown and we'd like to see projects like this continue. This building currently has got a large tree growing out of the roof and so I'd like to see it kind of move closer and not further away from renovation. So hopefully soon we'll, we'll see this again.
I hope somebody else, some other developer will pick up this project and, uh, do something with it. Downtown's on the rise and.
Yeah, it's a lot of square footage that a good developer could come into and, and take the tree out of the roof and start working with it to get it back to where it needs to be. It really bothered me that there's a tree growing out of it.
I, I caught on to that.
Yeah.
What's the address of that?
One Main Street. It's the old River Nicks or, uh, Woolworths, is that?
It's right at the corner. It runs the whole block all the way through Spanish Street. That's build, that particular building though. So it's a big footprint.
Yeah.
It's two, two-story, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a big building.
It's two stories.
It's actually.
Two stories or three stories?
Might be three.
It might be three stories.
I think it is, yeah, it's either two or three. I think there's some pretty fantastic views from the second floor. Come on developers. Come on in.
Right at the corner.
Yeah.
Actually, there are two buildings there. There's one North Main and three North, or five and one Main.
I think, is it five and one?
One and one.
So all, all totaled, it's a large amount of square footage and it goes straight from Main to Spanish. The, both buildings run the entire length of the block.
Anybody thinking about the building?
No, 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 no. They're saying four North Main.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. Independence of Main. The old River Nicks or Willie Jacks or, you know, Woolworths.
So is it? Okay, I, 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 yes, we have, we have an issue. Great.
Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we have two appointments this evening. Uh, the first, to the appointment of the River Campus Board of Managers is Danielle Quiner. All entertaining motion and such.
Sub moved.
Second.
Motion by, probably seconded by Ryan. Uh, any discussion? If not, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we also need to reappoint, uh, Mr. Meyer to Showman Center Board of Managers.
Sub moved.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second for Ryan. Any discussion?
No, except I was gonna, is there gonna be an opening for another spot on that soon?
There, there is, but it's a university apartment.
There are six people on the board, three of them appointed by the city and three of them appointed by the university.
Oh.
Right. All of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's like you gotta begin, Scott. We have no closed session this evening?
Make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
Motion made to adjourn, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.